Good morning, and may it please the court. My name is Greg Kerwin, registration number 14161. A co-counsel who handled this in the district court and filed this appeal died last fall, David Medina. That's why he can't be here. I'm going to try to reserve about three to five minutes for rebuttal. This case is about protecting the city's parks and the reasonable expectations of the people who use them. Is the Denver zoning code's requirement that a rezoning be consistent with the city's adopted plans an empty, toothless requirement because all the city council needs to do to approve a rezoning is say this requirement is met? And when Denver residents participate in a consensus planning process to create a city council-approved plan which becomes part of the city's comprehensive plan, can they hold the city accountable to honor that plan? The answers for this court depend on how the court frames the question. And so the main thing I would like to talk with you about today is the standard of review. If the court reviews de novo, what we say is the legal question of whether the rezoning here complied with the Denver zoning code's statutory mandate that a rezoning must be consistent with the city's adopted plans, it should, as a matter of law, vacate the rezoning. Placing tall buildings next to Sloane's Lake Park instead of near Colfax is not consistent with the only relevant adopted plan here, the West Colfax Plan. Defendants' proposed standard of review is quite different. They say that the court should defer to the city's legal interpretation and apply the competent evidence standard to this legal, non-evidentiary issue, and effectively make unreviewable the city council's compliance with the zoning code's statutory requirement. The city is effectively suggesting that the court read into the Denver zoning code a new provision that any time the city council approves a rezoning, the court must conclude the zoning code's requirement, legal requirement, is met. And a reviewing court like this one cannot even examine the legal issue of whether the rezoning is consistent with the city's adopted plans. According to defendants, the city must, the court must blindly accept the city's statement that the rezoning is consistent with adopted plans and therefore complied with the statutory requirement. If the city's never, well, and the district court handled it this way, which we think is also erroneous, his phrasing was mere contemplation of the West Colfax Plan by the city council was enough. Not that it was consistent, just that the city council contemplated it. So if the city's never accountable, then the concept of judicial review of rezoning decisions is empty. Citizens are wasting their time participating in consensus efforts to plan for change in their own neighborhoods. Why participate in a planning process if the courts will not or cannot enforce the zoning code's requirement?
Counsel, let me ask you this question. If it's de novo review, how about telling us what is inconsistent with, first of all, what is the pertinent adopted plan and what is inconsistent with that plan?
Sure, Your Honor. So the pertinent adopted plan, as we argue in the briefs, is the West Colfax Plan, adopted in the sense of adopted by the Denver City Council. We don't believe the general development plan, which is undisputed, was never adopted by the Denver City Council, is a pertinent plan. And our legal authority for that, following from Supreme Court cases, is the only entity in the city of Denver that can adopt binding land use plans, is the city council, the equivalent of Board of County Commissioners in other counties.
And what's inconsistent with what was done or approved by the city council in this case with the West Colfax Plan?
So the West Colfax Plan, adopted in 2006, specifically states that density should be placed toward the center of, it's a large site, used to be St. Anthony's Hospital, multiple blocks running from Seventeenth to Colfax, all shown in the plan. And it says density should be placed toward the center of the site and towards Colfax. And people testified at the hearing, this is undisputed, the reason for that was to keep the tall buildings away from the park, away from Sloane's Lake Park. The rezoning concerned just one block of that much larger portion. And let me pause, I think this may be evident to you, but the West Colfax Plan covers a great deal of area, not just this former St. Anthony's site. And so its length has to do with many other portions of the site. They called this site the Holy Tony's Site, I think they were joking around, but the Holy Tony's Site specifically includes this direction, the density should be placed towards West Colfax. And yet the zoning that was approved here places a 12-story, or allows a 12-story mixed-use condo building, CMX-12, to be placed right next to the park, away from Colfax.
Pardon me for interrupting, counsel. I'm looking at your diagram on page nine of your opening brief.
Okay. Let me grab it. I'm with you, Your Honor.
And I see that the Colfax development is toward the right, the park is toward the left, correct?
Yes, that's right.
But also toward the left, on the far left, to the left of what appears to be some green space in the middle?
Yes.
There appear to be buildings. And while those buildings aren't as tall as the other buildings, those buildings certainly appear tall enough to, for example, shut off the view of the park from people who are on the street that is at the bottom of the picture. So it looks to me like the plan certainly contemplated building at that left-hand side.
Undisputed, Your Honor. No one is contending that no buildings could be placed on this block. Five stories is what they were discussing, and I think if you, we didn't give you the scale, but I think what you're looking at on the left side there is probably a five-story building in this example.
Okay, but that's going to block views, right?
It would block views from Sixteenth, yes. This isn't just about blocking views, Your Honor, it's about where to place the tall buildings. And the community's vision was to do it towards Colfax, to reinvigorate Colfax.
I understand, but I'm trying to evaluate the harm that you're talking about.
Of course.
So what is, what is the harm? I understand you're saying that, well, they promised to be out toward Colfax with the big ones and not toward the park, but what's the harm considering that there are some, say, five-story buildings that would be built along the park? What's the harm?
Well, in simple terms, so the sun would shine from the south, which is on the right in this picture, and a five-story building would cast almost no shadow on the park, a 12-story building, this was discussed at the hearing, I'm not going outside the record, would cast shadows across the park. In terms of what you see from the park, this would be far more similar to the old St. Anthony's Hospital buildings that were there. There were buildings, these were not single-family residences before, when it was a hospital. And so the view from the park would not be this towering 12-story structure, it would be approximately what was there. And it wouldn't dominate the park the way in New York, Central Park has a wall of buildings. The planners in 2006 sought to avoid exactly that appearance of a park ringed with high-rises and expansive condos where people can enjoy the view at the expense of the public.
Does the record indicate how tall the St. Anthony's building was that occupied this space?
I believe that that is in the description in the West Colfax Plan or the St. Anthony's Task Force of the existing development, but I'm not certain of that. I haven't reviewed that in the last few weeks.
Thank you.
Counsel, during the public hearing regarding this proposed rezoning, there were at least one, perhaps more, city council members that specifically noted that the rezoning proposal conformed with the West Colfax Plan and with the Denver's comprehensive planning document. So if that's in the record, how are we supposed to go against the will of city council? I mean, you're effectively asking us to legislate from the bench, are you not?
I'm certainly not asking you to legislate from the bench, but you, Judge Fox, I think you're hitting my core argument, which is judicial review is meaningless if two out of 13 council members say the legal requirement is met and you can't evaluate that as judges applying the law and your own interpretation of what the legal requirement is. Absolutely true, I think it was at least two council members who said that, including Susan Shepherd, whose district this was, and they said that they think there's consistency. And my point to you is, if that's all that's needed to affirm a city council decision on zoning, you're wasting your time. And so are people who appear at these planning processes expecting the city to honor plans. There's no judicial review. Analogous, but not really in the administrative law context, would be because you review results of jury trials all the time. Imagine that a district judge gives erroneous instructions to the jury. That would be the classic kind of reversible error, different context, that you address. Here, the directions to the jurors, quasi-judicial decision-makers, council members, from the city were that you can consider as an adopted plan this general development plan created by the developer which plops up to 20-story buildings on this block. And so the council members, including presumably the two members, they didn't connect the dots, but the two members you just mentioned, were erroneously instructed as a matter of law by the city's planning department, which prepared these slides, and by the city attorney's office, which sits through these council meetings and controls what legal directions are given to the council. Now, I know I'm stretching because you're used to the competent evidence standard, which is a different standard, but what I would suggest to you is that should apply to evidentiary issues, not legal issues. And I was listening to the previous argument and some debate about questions of fact and questions of law. In the traditional standard of review context, I think you might call this a mixed question of fact and law, which typically is de novo for the legal parts. Judge Daly, you look like you're ready to ask something.
I am ready to ask a question.
I'm talking too fast.
Kerwin, if only I could remember it.
Oh.
My question is, how strict is the condition that you're saying is inconsistent? Is there flexibility among the various either guidelines or principles of this adopted plan? Is there flexibility that can be, that can be involved in the judgment? Or is it a cast in iron, don't put these things next to Sloane's Lake?
Your Honor, I think I have to admit that there needs to be flexibility, but I would suggest this is an extreme case. Let me give you two examples, and I'm going to try to reserve a couple of minutes for rebuttal. Two examples. Suppose the city argued, they didn't do that here, that the adopted plan requirement allows the city to always disregard specific requirements in a plan. I think you would find that clear legal error, and maybe that's an extreme. Let me give you another example. Suppose they say that any time a developer submits a proposed plan to the city's planning department, no review, no approval by council, that that's an adopted plan that the council can rely on. Again, an extreme. So in answer to your question, I think there could be situations in the middle. I submit that a 12-story condo building 40 feet off of Seventeenth Avenue does not place density towards Colfax. Happy to address follows, but I'm going to try to reserve about three minutes for rebuttal.
It may not, but I guess my question, please stop the clock. I guess my question is that it may not comply with that particular one, but is there other types of conditions by which you say, gee, they're all in the pot and we have to mix them, and not all of them can be applied consistently with each other, we can apply it in this manner at this time?
I'm not entirely sure I understand your question, but the statutory mandate here of consistency with the city's adopted plans, I would submit, is clear, no ambiguity. And so when this court reviews that, it should not need to defer to anybody's interpretation. So that should be clear. And then the facts you're presented with, I would suggest, are clear, where the tall buildings are being plopped right next to the park, the opposite of what was the community requested.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
You took a great stab at that very ambiguous question.
Thank you, Your Honor.
May please the court. My name is Bill Curiagis, registration number 39112. I'm here on behalf of the defendant, appellate and cross, or appellate and cross-appellant, EFG South Sloane's Lake One LLC. I also have Brian Connolly from my office here, and also Tracy Davis from the city attorney's office is here as well. She represents the other defendants in the case. Given the difficulty of splitting up the time, we've agreed that I'll be presenting the oral argument on behalf of all of the appellees in the case. I'd like to start talking about what Mr. Kerwin was talking about, the merits of the Rule 106 claim, and specifically this issue of consistency with the West Colfax Plan. The appellant's argument amounts to an argument that there is a mandate that any rezoning comply with this single concept that they say is reflected in the West Colfax Plan that relates to the configuration of heights and densities on the former St. Anthony's site. This concept is reflected in one of approximately 50 guiding principles from the St. Anthony's Task Force Redevelopment Report, and also in the Example Illustrated Plan that Judge Bernard asked about. Their characterization of this concept as a mandate reflects an improper understanding of both the unspecified language that's at issue, the notion of consistency with adopted plans, and also the standard of review that's applicable in Rule 106 cases. There is no mandate in the West Colfax Plan concerning any specific allocation of heights or densities on the site. What the relevant mandate is, is that city council find, in reviewing the record, that the West Colfax Plan, or the rezoning, is consistent with the West Colfax Plan, as well as the other adopted plans of the city. Now, any one provision in the West Colfax Plan is just one of many different factors that the city council had to look at when it made that determination. The appellees happen to rely exclusively on one concept out of the St. Anthony's Redevelopment Task Force Report, but there are approximately 50 different guiding principles in that report.
Counsel, if I could interrupt you just briefly, since you're talking about the St. Anthony's Hospital Redevelopment Task Force, what is the legal effect of the recommendations of that task force?
So it's not itself one of the plans. What it is, is it's a, it's a report that's referenced sort of indirectly, and then there's some overlap with the West Colfax Plan itself. The text of the West Colfax Plan says that the city should utilize the guiding principles, like I said, there's about 50 of them, in developing plans for the site. That's sort of a preface to a list of nine specific recommendations that are actually in the text of the West Colfax Plan itself. Those specific recommendations, in some ways, parallel some of the guiding principles, and in other ways are slightly different. But the only reference in the plan itself is just sort of this generalized reference to the Task Force Report and says to utilize those guiding principles.
Those guiding principles are in the Task Force Report, not in the West Colfax Plan?
That's correct. They're sort of in gray bubbles on the side of the page on the St. Anthony's Task Force Report. There's also that illustrated plan, and these concepts-
Counsel, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm trying to find, you know, struggle with, is there a rule that we can apply here? And you're basically saying, well, you know, these plans really don't, it would be unfair to say that you're saying they don't mean all that much, but you're not, you are saying that they don't mean what Mr. Kerwin says they mean. I understand that. But obviously, let's say, for example, and I'm not saying the city would do this, this is only hypothetical, so please don't take offense, but let's say the city decided that they wanted to put in a series of marijuana shops instead along this frontage here. And that, and let's say the plan had said something to the effect of, these will be private dwellings, okay? Well, would Mr. Kerwin have a point, then, that you're trying to put in marijuana shops instead of what the city had first said, which is private dwellings?
There's sort of two different parts to the way I would respond to that. The first is the nature of what is, what is consistency. And that relates really to the second issue, which is, what is the kind of standard that you're talking about in the plans at issue? So if you have an objective kind of requirement that says, in a planning area, this is, this area should be residential, that's a very objective kind of standard, either it is or it isn't residential. What we have here is very different from that. We don't have a standard that says there can't be tall buildings on this site, or that the buildings need to be five stories, or need to be four stories, or need to be eight stories. What we have is a much more subjective, and I would, I would say, flexible standard in terms of, what it talks about is transitioning heights and densities in a way that respects the neighborhood edges. And there is also, so, and that's in fact what we have here. Because of the design overlay district, what you have is a situation where you have, as Mr. Kerwin acknowledged, you have a sort of a step back from Seventeenth Avenue, where for a certain number of feet, buildings are limited actually to five feet, five stories in height, which Mr. Kerwin acknowledged would actually be just fine. And from the west side of the site, on Stewart Street, you have, you have an additional step back where it can only be three, three stories high for some period of time. And then it actually, there's another step back even further in that's reflected on the GDP that shows there's an additional transition. So by the time you actually get to 12 stories, you're fully toward West Colfax and toward the core of the site, which is exactly the language in the St. Anthony's Task Force Report, that talks about where you put the tall buildings, where you put the height and density. You don't have 12 stories right next to the park, in Mr. Kerwin's words. So what, I would draw a clear contrast between a kind of a, even you could call it a guiding principle, or you could call it a recommendation if it were in the West Colfax Plan that said, this should be a residential site. And if my client, for example, is the applicant, were seeking a rezoning that would have made it a commercial site, I think you have a much easier time in that context for the court to perform meaningful judicial review and say, they're simply not compliant here, and there's no way for the court, or for the city council, on whatever's in the record, to justify that.
Thank you. You have raised another question for me about the diagram on page five of Mr. Kerwin's opening brief.
Okay.
Now, this, it says beneath this image, it illustrates how the developers intend to place the tall buildings next to Sloane's Lake Park and away from West Colfax. You're saying that that's not the case. Does this photo misrepresent what you're saying? Or not photo, design, I'm sorry.
So a couple of things. First of all, what the, what the city council approved and what is under review now is the rezoning itself, and not a particular development proposal. It so happens that there are conversations with, I mean, my client is not ultimately going to build anything on the site. There are, you know, there's contemplation of future, of specific future development on the site, but what's being reviewed today here is the rezoning itself. This image is not in the record, and I think part, there's, there's some danger in asking the court to take judicial notice of a development rendering that was taken off the internet. But ultimately, what is being, what is being reviewed is the rezoning itself, and as I said, there cannot be, under the design overlay district zoning that applies to this, as well as the CMX-12 zoning, you cannot build 12 stories right up to the curb on Seventeenth Avenue. That's simply not what the zoning allows.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And so ultimately, in terms of the judicial review, what this court is being asked to do is to evaluate, not itself whether this rezoning is consistent with the West Colfax Plan, but whether there is competent evidence in the record to support the determination that city council made on that issue. Do you have a question, Judge Daly?
Nope.
But even if this court were being asked to perform the primary analysis itself and to say independently, sitting as a finder of fact, or interpreting what Mr. Kerwin characterizes as a legal issue, of whether or not there is consistency with the adopted plans of the city, and specifically this requirement of a transitioning of height and densities, the evidence in the record shows, as I referred to with respect to the design overlay district, that in fact, there is a transitioning, and that is in fact consistent if the court were looking at that, that issue specifically.
Counsel, what's your position, or what's your client's position about who conducts that inquiry? Who is the right body to conduct the consistency with the governing plans?
Under Rule 106, this court has an important reviewing role, but it's a limited role. The determination of whether or not a rezoning is consistent with adopted plans of the city is a required determination to be made, but it's to be made by the city council. The case law interpreting Rule 106 doesn't distinguish in terms of legal issues or factual issues. What it says is that the courts are supposed to conduct a review to determine whether there is competent evidence in the record to support the determination that the council makes on the various criteria that are set out in the zoning code, one of which is consistency with the adopted plans.
Isn't there authority also, under 106, to review whether or not the council misconstrued or misapplied their legal standards?
That's correct. But in this situation, what you have in terms of actually investigating what the council did, the issue is, was there some sort of error in terms of construing what it means to be consistent with something that is a very subjective and indefinite standard?
Well, isn't the legal, isn't the legal question going to be something like you started out with at the very beginning? Is there a mandate? If there is a mandate, then the council would have acted inconsistent with it. If there's not a mandate, maybe the council had discretion to do something else.
There, the mandate that's actually in the zoning code is that the city council find five different criteria to be satisfied. One of those is consistency with the adopted plans of the city. That occurs at sort of a higher level than any particular granular analysis.
If there was a mandate that said, thou shalt not have 12-story buildings on Sloane's Lake, and the Denver City Council approved 12-story buildings on Sloane's Lake, would you say that's still a decision for the city council, or that should be reviewed by the court and determined to be inconsistent with the plan?
I would agree, if there were an objective statement like that, that that would be, it would be very easy for the court to look at that and review and, and say there's simply, as a matter of law, inconsistency.
Counsel, I also want to apologize for my enthusiasm.
Not a problem. It's, zoning can be a very exciting kind of a topic to deal with. Now, but here, I think there, it's worth drawing a contrast with the example that you just gave, with the much more subjective language that we have that talks about transitioning. As I mentioned, there is a transitioning here. What we don't have is an argument from, from the appellees that comes out and says that this, this transitioning is insufficient because it shouldn't be five stories off the park, it should be four stories off the park, or it shouldn't be three stories across the street from the Torres Family Residence, it should be two stories. And the reason they don't make that argument is because they can't, because there isn't anything in the West Colfax Plan that they can point to and say that this prohibits 12 stories, it prohibits, quote, "tall buildings." There's simply nothing there for them to latch onto in that regard. And so you have a situation where you have this subjective criteria, and the correct body to make the evaluation of applying that is the city council. Again, there's a meaningful review function that this court needs to do, but what, but the nature of that review is colored by the nature of the factor that's in the guidance itself in this situation. I want to shift also and address this issue regarding the GDP. The plaintiffs make this argument that there was something wrong with consideration of the GDP by the city council, but they don't actually explain why it was substantively problematic for the council to do so. What they seem to be doing is looking for an, some technical argument that the city failed to follow the law. But in actuality, the opposite is true. There's a specific Denver code provision that requires, when there is an approved GDP, for the city council to take into consideration that GDP. From that perspective, that essentially resolves the issue. This council had to consider it one way or another, whether it was on the slide and the, on the hearing presentation that related to consistency with the other adopted plans or was considered otherwise, it needed to be considered. I want to shift just with a little bit of time that I have left to the cross-appeal issues. We've raised two issues on cross-appeal that have potentially broad implications for Rule 106 cases. The first was that the plaintiffs were allowed to substitute and add a new group of plaintiffs to this case pursuant to a motion that was filed 98 days after the decision in this case. Under Rule 106, there is a strict jurisdictional deadline. If a Rule 106 claim is not filed within 28 days of the decision at issue, it is jurisdictionally barred.
Counsel, did this new group of plaintiffs have different issues to raise, or were their interests otherwise represented?
It's the same, it's the same legal counsel. I, you know, whether or not there were different inputs that went into their argumentation, I don't know that. They, I believe, have taken the position that all of the various plaintiffs that have cycled through this case all had the same position. But what's important here, I think, is they're relying on the relation-back provision to allow a situation, to justify an argument that they can effectively, at any point in time, add a new plaintiff who is effectively asserting for the first time a Rule 106 claim without regard to the time limit that's stated in the rule. If you look at the case law that interprets Rule 106B, which contains the relation-back provision, it states that the intention of that provision was to allow for correction of a technical defect where a plaintiff filed and validly perfected a Rule 106 claim, but, for example, failed to add the applicant, which is a necessary party. It doesn't contemplate at all a situation where a new plaintiff would be allowed to add a new Rule 106 claim for the first time.
Thank you, counsel. Your time's expired.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave the cross-appeal to the briefing unless the court has questions and touch on a few issues. First, I think it is interesting that the city's not speaking here, they're leaving it to the developer to justify this, and yet what we're talking about is very critical to the city's process. And I was also interested to hear EFG admit that this court's role is not toothless, and it's an important reviewing role, a meaningful role, and they agree that in an extreme case, in my words, not theirs, that the court can review consistency. So the consistency decision shouldn't be limited to just the city council. So the challenge I have is the one Judge Daly focused, which is, is this mandate clear or not? And Judge Bernard focused on this diagram, which is part of the West Colfax Plan. This is from page nine of our brief, and it-
Was that in the record?
It is, yes, it is, Your Honor. This is, the West Colfax Plan is part of the record, this is just an enlarged version of what is also on page nine. And the mandate in the upper right-hand corner is, highest density and intensity focused to core and toward Colfax. And that's drawn-
May I add a- May I add a, ask a question, please, Mr. Kerwin?
Of course, Your Honor.
This goes back to the photograph on page five. I want to make sure that I am appropriately oriented. I understand it was not part of the record, but you, you suggested that we could take judicial notice of it in your brief.
Yes.
All right. I want to make sure that I understand where this large building is. Looking back, looking at that building, and then looking at the diagram on page nine, is that large building to the left or to the right of the green concourse that looks to go between two sections that has the circle toward the top?
It's to the left. Let me help you get your bearings. The green concourse would be the equivalent of Sixteenth, I believe, and would run east-west.
All right.
The, the photo, or the illustration on page five that you're looking at is, if you had a crane sitting in Sloane's Lake Park that was about three stories tall, that's what you would see, the Torres Family Home would be on the right, except this developer has wiped out the Torres Family Home and left it as green space, it's right around the corner. And the street in front of you, running east to west, is Seventeenth Street, which, Seventeenth Avenue, which runs right along the, the, the south side of Sloane's Lake Park.
All right, thank you.
Okay? Let's see, just very briefly, on the general development plan, because I didn't address that, it's analogous to a flawed jury instruction. So on page 24 of our brief is one of the slides the city presented to the city council, consistency with adopted plan, and they list four purported adopted plans. Three, no question, the comp plan, blueprint, West Colfax plan, and they plop the GDP right there. That is an erroneous instruction to the council, far more than just considering, and that's what tainted the council's decision about consistency as a matter of law. I'm out of time, unless the court has other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, counsel, for your arguments today. Very helpful, both sides, appreciate it. Case will stand, submit, and pen you issue in due course. Thank you all very much.